Okay, are we about ready, Quinn?
I think we are.
Okay, so I will, I will call to order this special meeting of the Grand County Commission. The purpose of our special meeting is to hear a presentation on the Trail to Tomorrow Plan. So take it away.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you all. On behalf of our whole team, I'd really like to start off today by saying how grateful we are to have had this opportunity to work on such a truly extraordinary project in a truly extraordinary place. This has been, you know, we learn a little bit everywhere we go. But Moab and Grand County probably presented some of the most unique, the most unique set of challenges I think I have had the privilege to deal with. And there's so much, so much opportunity here. And so we've really embarked on a path of providing you with a lot of different options moving forward. And that's why we ended up with these three pathways to, to point you in different directions so that you can use this plan. We, it is our fervent hope that you do use this plan and that you find much about to move your work forward. The Trail to Tomorrow Plan, the name was agreed upon by, by Grand County Economic Development Department. We wanted to give it a name that was memorable and that really expressed the intention of moving forward. Alicia, we should have tested this. It's not moving. Alicia's still here.
I think she was watching from her office.
Okay, but I wonder if a mouse might work better? This keyboard is not advancing the slides.
Yeah, I feel like. Grand Master.
So a little bit about what this plan is. Really a plan to foster a healthy Grand County economy. That's what you asked for, for a plan for economic diversification, for sustainable tourism and for destiny and for community asset-based development. So that's what we've given you fair bones, but this is also a stewardship plan. And when we, we talk about a stewardship plan, we're talking about a holistic approach to planning that takes into account cultural, social, economic, environmental and governmental aspects of, of a plan. And so even though we don't use the word stewardship plan in this document, certainly take inspiration from the fact that it meets the, the requirements of stewardship plan. The idea was to create a shared vision with people and places. So the purpose of the plan, you see this language more just to, to revisit this, the whole idea of this plan. Yeah, goal was to achieve greater harmony between the local economic realities and what residents are prioritizing quality of life. So the Trail to Tomorrow Strategic Plan is about managing tourism to benefit the community. We'll continue to develop it first on the other next five years. From the start, being the single element hearing all voices. The end goal, as was created several times during the plan, is to enhance local quality of life as well as the experience of those who visit or do business here, all while safeguarding the negative side environment, community culture of Grand County. Okay, so this, this diagram really takes you through all of the different steps that we took along the way to, to back that trail to tomorrow. Extensive desktop research and interviews, business sentiment survey, perception study, which gives deep insight into who's coming here and what might motivate them to come here and spend more in the future. We established a steering committee from the start. This was a nine-member steering committee that met four different times to provide oversight and share input. Two of your commissioners served on that.
Kathy, maybe look at that screen, then the mic could be a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you very much.
I will try to project, but fortunately Mitch is in that view. Okay, there we go, much better. Can you hear me better now? Okay. Fourteen topical round, roundtables. We had, we identified fourteen different topics for in-depth exploration with members of your community. We saw a lack of participation sadly in our community forums. We held four of them. We netted a total of thirty attendees, including Commissioner Walker. I think several commissioners attended, actually. Where we did have great participation was in the topical roundtables. We had about a hundred and sixty business and community leaders taking part in those, including many of the commissioners. And we got a lot of very in-depth valuable input on some key issues for this plan. Back in May, we convened our steering committee into an ideation session. And that's really where we walked through the main elements of the framework for the plan that you see now today. And then the final step on this trail is to share this plan with the Grand County Commission today. And so our plan today really is to spend about thirty minutes giving you a high-level overview of the plan and then the remaining sixty minutes of our time together, really engaging in discussion. And just want to call your attention to the fact that while we're giving you a very high-level overview today and while the plan encapsulates a lot of information, the real detail of the research behind this plan is captured in the situation analysis, which as of yesterday expanded to a hundred and thirty-four pages, thirty-four pages of detailed findings from independent research and stakeholder engagement. RRC Associates was a heavy contributor to this situation analysis, but also there was quite a bit of research from Mitch and myself in terms of stakeholder engagement and certainly capturing the findings from those roundtable studies. So let me just walk you through some of the top findings. There is no doubt that Grand County has a tourism economy. Services and retail are the backbone of your economy. Those two categories generated eighty-seven percent of your taxable sales between April twenty twenty-three and March twenty twenty-four. This vital economy is slowing. We've heard a lot of anecdotal evidence about this. U S Travel Association pointed to this yesterday. They were saying the economy trap tourism is slowing down. They're saying it's not a disaster, but they are starting to see signs across the country that this economy is slowing. So this plan is arriving for you at a very important time for you to take steps to make certain that this vital economy for your county is, continues to thrive. The two biggest sectors, lodging and restaurants, the taxable sales for those categories dropped in both twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, even as other sectors were growing. Meanwhile, it, it's not, it, we can point to neighbors, Washington and Summit Counties. Their lodging and restaurant sector saw continued growth during those same two years, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. The occupancy of your town rooms and vacation rentals dropped as inventory climbed fairly significantly. We also saw some slowing demand. Traffic volumes on U S ninety-one, another signal of a slowing economy. Traffic volumes dropped six point six percent from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two and another two, two point two percent from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Now, you would have expected that drop from twenty twenty-one. That was the boom year that was recorded by everyone, but that downturn continued. Here is probably one of the most major findings that we drew from this work. Because many people pointed us initially to the fact that the reservation system at Arches, the timed entry system was a major factor in why the economy, the tourism economy was declining a bit. But what we found was that even though Arches' visitation, parks' visitation fell, fell from twenty twenty-one, when you go back to twenty nineteen and compare visitation at all three parks for twenty nineteen, it was almost exactly the same in twenty twenty-three, even with the timed entry system. The numbers were down just by zero point three percent collectively. And that's because even though Arches' visitation dropped eleven percent, visitation climbed at Dead Horse Point State Park and Canyonlands National Park. People were still coming here. The patterns of behavior, the patterns of visitation changed. We also found that visitation to Arches and Canyonlands is almost perfectly correlated to taxable sales in Grand County. That means when people come and visit your parks, there's a direct relationship between visitation and spending. Maintaining that park's visitation is vital for your economy. We also found some significant quality of life issues here compared with other outdoor recreation communities. You are, we, RRC compared you with eleven other places that were renowned for outdoor recreation, identified by your Grand County E D E. We found that relative to those other places, Grand County is slightly populated and employment is highly concentrated in a single industry. Of your jobs, forty-eight point nine percent relate to tourism and outdoor recreation. Only Mono County in California, which is at the gateway of Yosemite, has a higher concentration of tourism-related jobs. And of those twelve comparison communities, Grand County had the lowest median household income and the highest share of housing cost burdened homeowners. Nearly forty-six percent of your county homeowners mortgages that were consuming more than thirty percent of their incomes. And that's an indication of economic vulnerability. The visitor perception study provided happier news. This shows, this again compared Moab to a number of outdoor recreation-focused destinations. And what we saw was that Moab was at the top of the heap when it came to, well, overall of outdoor recreation travelers. For natural beauty, top of the heap. Moab is the, is the dark green dot. For outdoor experiences, you're in a class apart. You're almost off the chart for that particular category. Safety and security toward the top, friendly people toward the top, customer service above the midline, positive vibe toward the top, variety of lodgings, that's where it starts to dip. Dining and food scene toward the bottom, arts and culture scene toward the bottom. Value for the money, this is put off in this vision, a visual, but that's also toward the bottom. So those are areas of vulnerability for you. So those are areas to focus on for the future. One, even though we had a small turnout at our community farms, there was such a strong response to this particular question that I wanted to share it with you. It's embedded in the report. What kind of visitors would you like for Grand County to attract? Almost off the charts, those who care for natural resources. That is the key to attracting visitors who are going to fit in to your culture in Grand County. That is almost the definition of your valued visitors. Also, visitors who take guided experiences. So many of your small businesses depend on visitors who take those guided experiences. There's another area for you to lean into, those whose spending contributes most to the local economy. Again, those are visitors that are very valued here. You don't always see that in a lot of places. Sometimes the high-spending visitor is not as valued nearly as much as other categories of visitors, but they're valued here. We also got a lot of deep insight into this question. We asked people what they participated in during their last, their most recent visit to Moab. And here's where we saw that obviously visiting your parks is at the top of the heap. Seventy-seven percent visited Arches, another sixty, sixty-one percent visited Canyonlands. But when you get to your outdoor recreation segments, it turns out that off-roading is your biggest, see, outdoor recreation segment. Twenty percent took part in that activity compared with eleven percent for mountain biking, eight percent for horseback riding, five percent for road biking, five percent rock climbing. And then you start getting into very small numbers for, for some of the other categories that you're famed for and well-known for and treasured for. But it's important to keep this in perspective. The next chart is if you went to Arches, what else did you do? And the numbers stayed very similar, twenty-one percent for off-roading, eleven percent for mountain biking, four percent for rock climbing. So it's very consistent. Your, your national park visitor is very typical of your total respondents. The next slide talks about who purchases guided experiences. Because you saw from that question about who are the visitors we'd like to attract here? Those who take guided experiences are valued. Number one, guided experience river activities, eighty-three percent. So that they took part in river guided, eighty-three percent of those who took a river activity had a guided experience. Off-roading was the sex, next biggest segment that used guided experiences. If they took an off-roading experience, forty-seven percent of them took guided experience. Mountain biking, thirty-three percent of those folks used a guided experience. And then you see even, even the people visiting Arches, Dead Horse Point, Canyonlands, were there for photography, were taking guided experiences too. Even twelve percent of your hikers were taking guided experiences. These might be your Rocky Mountain year people. These are probably your group tour people because they're getting that guided experience. So any questions about the, the findings before we move on?
I, I, when did, when did we lose SkyWest?
January. January.
Was, really it was March, wasn't it? March was when they change, yeah, they extended a little bit, but it was March or April. Didn't finally lose the, the major carrier.
I was on the last flight out of Denver when I came here. All right. So as I said from the start, this planning process really has been shaped to center on how the local economy can be guided, whether through improved tourism or more economic diversification to enhance the quality of life in place in Grand County. That is expressed in both the vision we've identified for you and the mission, the mission. The vision is that aspirational statement for you to work toward for this next five years of this plan. I, I smile every time I talk about this because when we shared this at the ideation session, saying for one of the most beautiful places on the planet, also to be among the best places to live, play, work or do business. Not one person blinked at the idea that this was one of the most beautiful places on the planet. Certainly is in our opinion, everyone takes it, everyone accepts that as fact here. What we did talk about is how to express the rest of it. And then this is where we landed. We talked a little bit about one of the best places in the U S to live, play, work or do business. And the, really the resolution was we want to be one of the best places to live, work or do business anywhere, not just in the U S. The mission, this kind of harkens back to a lot of history here where there has been interaction between humans and the incredible resources here. And now we're embedding this in your future mission to pair this region's magnificent natural advantages with human ingenuity to power an economy delivering positive outcomes for people and places in the uranium. This is almost what happened with your uranium industry. These magnificent natural advantages, people figured out how to put this to work, powered your economy. Now you're using that human ingenuity in new ways to power the economy that delivers positive outcomes. We identified three pathways for you to focus your attention on. The first one is really your long-term pathway to building a strong economy here in Grand County. It's all about, in our view, our recommendation to you is to address the fundamentals before you can really talk about, you know, attracting new businesses. There are just basic requirements that need to be met. Top of the list is housing, which is a key ingredient in the next requirement, which is workforce. You have a shortage of workforce here that is very closely linked to your shortage of housing. Lack of buildable land, your county has these magnificent open spaces, but almost all of it is public land, as you well know. Maybe about five percent private. So these fundamentals would need to be addressed if your economy is truly going to grow. And the question for you then is how much do you want to grow? And so that is really a question to be determined for your long-term growth. We identified pathway two, to talk about what you could do in the near term without significant investments in buildable land and in workforce and in housing. As these things are being developed, we believe that you can grow your economy by fostering tourism-adjacent businesses and by supporting entrepreneurship. The pathway three is really about engineering tourism, new ways to support community happiness and quality of place. So every plan needs big ideas. We've given you lots of different strategies and action steps under each of those three pathways. We thought we would just spend time with you today, just sort of, just talking about what we consider six of the biggest ideas for your consideration in this plan. So the first one, the most obvious one, your pathway one, you're addressing the fundamentals, is to create more housing. That is number one. That is, that goes to supporting community happiness. It goes to growing your economy. Support expanding the availability and affordability of housing. Offered you several different action steps. We would just offer this one for consideration today. Establish a point person to seek ways of establishing, of stimulating housing development. To have an expert, whether contractually or bringing that person on staff to really focus on all of the opportunities. We heard stories yesterday at the Grand County Summit, just some remarkable stories about some of the ingenuity that already has been brought to bear to develop housing. And we heard reference to the fact that Grand County supported and gives money to the Community Land Trust, which has made railroad crossings possible. But how can you go for what new ingenuity apply? And so just to remind you that I referenced this earlier, but that RRC comparison showed that Moab is at the top of the list when we're talking about the most housing disadvantaged, outdoor recreation communities that we compared it to.
Chip the microphone here. And, you know, I think it's, it's really important. Kathy outlined in that, in that first section, it was all about focusing on those fundamentals. And we all know that making progress on whether it's, it's housing, land availability, workforce attraction, air service, those things are, are going to take some time. So the second segment there really focused on those tourism-adjacent kinds of initiatives that even as work is being undertaken in those areas, there's still opportunities, we believe, to try and strengthen the economy and build. And so it's all about growing these tourism-adjacent businesses and supporting entrepreneurship. And when we talk about entrepreneurship, we're really talking about some of those smaller business operations. Don't need significant physical space, don't need significant workforce. And so the, the element here, support growth of a connected, supportive community of entrepreneurs interested in integrating work with a passion for outdoor recreation. We've talked in, in the, in the past about some of the other destinations, outdoor recreation-oriented destinations, and their very strong success in attracting businesses that are active in that space, in that outdoor recreation space. And they essentially want to co-brand with those destinations. The identity, the recognition of those destinations have a really strong attraction potential. We think you can build on that in the early stage by focusing on some of those small, one, two-person entrepreneur entities who are in the space that can come to Moab that don't have significant workforce needs or physical space needs. And so we're talking about seeking support and really trying to incentivize some of these outdoor recreation businesses to think about Grand County as, as an option. And whether it's a development zone that could offer some tax offsets to outdoor-related businesses, some of the active, proactive recruitment steps or initiatives that could be undertaken on that. So we, we think that's a, a, a very strong opportunity as well as really trying to foster the, the collaboration. That's one of the things that we saw time and time again in the forums that we, we had in the workshops of the, of the willingness of the businesses to come together and work collaboratively. And I think as we bring those folks together and really try and have and foster the, the integration and, and a relationship of those small outdoor recreation businesses and entrepreneurs, we have a really strong opportunity to build in that segment, even as we're working on some of those fundamental elements. The second pathway, this really intrigues us, of really trying to position Moab as a center nationally, maybe even internationally, in terms of where expertise is developed. And we think one of the first areas to develop that is in the search and rescue area. Where would different entities or organizations say what we really wanted to learn, cutting edge and the latest best practice thinking, that Moab would come to the top of that identity? And working with USU and thinking about some of the structure that could be developed there, we think search and rescue would be a, a very likely opportunity to lead with that sector and, and thinking about some of the competitive advantages that Moab and Grand County have in that space. I think as that evolved and developed, I think there's really strong opportunities to expand that. And whether it's in water-based recreation experiences, whether it's motorized vehicles, and really Moab would plant its flag in, in the ground of being that sort of center for excellence. And where folks from around the country would come again. And that while search and rescue might be the initial element, that that could be expanded into these other areas, building on, on the, on the, on the success. One of the intriguing things that we see as that potentially has success and that greater identity, I think there's really strong opportunity to use that in your marketing and promotional activities and, you know, experience in the recreation like the experts do. And that could be a real feather in the, in the cap and be another opportunity to showcase. One additional point on this, we think it's not only the organizations or those professionals who might be drawn to that. I think that that could also have individual independent, folks who are intrigued and embrace outdoor recreation as a part of their lifestyle that would say, I want to go to these classes. I want to be a part of this. It could be another, again, very important differentiating factor that Moab and Grand County could provide. The, the third element, and I can't tell you, the arts and culture area is a, is a segment that we think has really strong potential. You think back to the visitor input survey work and If you think back to the visitor input survey work and where Moab and Grand County currently is on the lower end of the spectrum of competitive destinations in that space, we think there's a really strong opportunity to build that and foster a vibrant creative economy by really nurturing that local talent, supporting small enterprises and integrating arts and culture into community development. So many of the other nature-based outdoor recreation spaces really elevate and have that as part of the experience. And I think it's a real natural that many of the folks who are drawn to those special natural environments are also arts and cultural enthusiasts as well. So I think by really trying to support local artists, designers, creative professionals to really showcase their work and elevate the recognition of the art environment as part of that Moab and Grand County experience. I think in some instances, might take some funding initiatives from the county to try and stimulate and foster that kind of creative thinking and some of those early-stage artisans who would embrace and think about Moab and Grand County as an area. And one of the most intriguing ones that we've thought about is the reuse of the Ultra site. And Kathy, you have brought this up, but, but thinking about that as a centerpiece of performance and thinking about bringing in those natural environments and how that could elevate the, the identity of Moab and Grand County and foster with independent artists and cultural elements, but really having that as a, as a piece that could add to the flavor and character of, of the destination.
My bet was first touring this, this sign right there on Lafayette River. It was, it just seemed like unnatural. If you've ever been to Missoula, Montana, you see Kettle House and the theater right next to Kettle House. You're kind of in the same position where you're right on that path, Redbox, Public City and other venues where the bands are just passing through. Happy to provide you with a little bit more information about that possibility since you're still in that generative phase where you're thinking about what to do with that sign. The other thing about the cultural traveler is it's a, it needs to be year-round. And so it's sort of a way of diversifying your tourism economy, not just diversifying your economy, but diversifying your tourism economy to capture another type of traveler. You reign in outdoor recreation, but rather than put all your eggs in one basket, there might be real value in building out this segment of your economy to provide more stability for when, I mean, when, when there's ebbs and flows and interest in outdoor recreation.
Kathy, if I might just expand, Kathy and I are working also in Park City and we were analyzing their product mix. And that's one of the things we pointed out, the recreational elements skewed either to the winter or the, the summer and, you know, very different elements. But it was that arts and culture element that had their year-round and could speak to all the audience and build some of that demand and interest in those shoulder and off-season periods. I think much of that same opportunity exists in Grand County.
And as Mitch pointed out, there's a lot of synergy between the outdoor recreation traveler and the cultural traveler too. So it's not an either-or type of proposition. Attracting value visitors, that is the number five big idea. A lot of destinations are now realizing that it is counterproductive to issue a come-one, come-all message to people to come and see their destinations, especially a place like Moab where you're already getting 3 million visitors a year. So the smart play is to really focus in on those visitors through your community of value and to try to align your marketing message and your marketing outreach to those kinds of people when they show up, fit in, and practice the same kinds of ethics that the people appear to evaluate. So that again is one of the key strategies for engineering tourism to support community happiness. Attract visitors who are most likely to generate positive impacts and share respect for Grand County places. And there's a number of ways that we recommend that you do this. Seek ongoing insight into the county's optimal visitors. Seek visitors who care about natural resources. You can slice and dice marketing outreach so finely these days. Broaden the appeal of the, you have the most diverse range of outdoor offerings in the U.S. We actually embraced thinking that had been brought to the Grand County EDD by Public Land Solutions about segmenting targeted travelers based on their ability to navigate the outdoors. What we would recommend is, and Public Land Solutions came up with three different categories. Adventures, your hardcore outdoor people, your sightseers. I was one of those this morning, I was driving around Arches at 6:00 AM, didn't have time for a hike, but I wanted to watch the sunrise. And then the overlappers, the people who aren't the extreme adventures, but they like a, you know, a little more adventure on their trip. Understanding the value of each one of these segments and using that to, to build and derive the most value from your outdoor recreation economy. And then consider using guided experiences as a call to action. I've, Mitch and I have both been to a lot of places in the mid, in the, in the west. You can, that you can tap into so much just walking down the street here. And of course you have to book it in advance because it fills up. But most places just simply do not have what you have, this incredible collection of guided experiences. It's another thing that really sets you apart. We would suggest really leaning into that and using that as part of the value proposition of coming to Moab. There we go, oh, those three travel segments. Again, this provides, thinking about your travelers in these three categories can give you the focus not only for your marketing, but for how you develop the product to attract each of these different kinds of travelers. These are, all three of these are compatible with the types of visitors your residents would value. But we would recommend that more research is needed to really understand the value of each of these for adventure. For example, your adventures might really amplify your brand, but if they bring all their gear and they're not spending a lot of money, they may not be the most economically advantageous traveler. But your sightseers or your overlappers who come with nothing and rent and use guided experiences, stay in the nicer hotels, they're the ones who are probably leaving more economic. And sixth, and it's almost an obvious one, it's what we first heard about when we started working on this project, was the conflict in your community about the different kinds of users, how different kinds of users are, are engaging with the public lands. And so to really move your economy forward, to build that tourism economy in a way that supports community happiness, is absolutely essential to focus on defusing conflict. That was what we talked about in that, that purpose statement, to create more harmony. One of the things that we learned in our topical roundtables is that there is a willingness among various user groups to come together and compromise and devise better solutions together. We strongly encourage you to take those opportunities as you're implementing this plan. There's some other specific recommendations that we've given you, specific action steps to work with your land managers and outfitters, classify activities as easy, moderate, difficult. That can make sure you don't have people getting in over their heads and causing conflicts that way. And steering, you know, the people of ability to different kinds of experiences, creating different kinds of experiences for the different classes of people. Mentioned seeking the voluntary resolution of various user conflicts. And then support addressing user conflicts by creating new experiences. We heard a lot about this, that creating, you know, new entrances to the back of arches for mountain bikers could eliminate some conflicts. So it's about putting on your thinking caps and really thinking about realistic ways to diffuse some of these concerns. Heard a lot about seeking support for Arches to continue adapting the reservation system. It's so vital to your economy. They seem to be making progress, but there's still a lot of room, you know, for coming up with better technologies to make sure that the maximal use of the park can be achieved. And then doing everything you can to position Utah Raptor State Park as a regional support park. We saw the Dead Horse Point and Canyonlands provided you with that extra outlet when the Arches visitation shut down. Shut down when it was reduced. Utah Raptor could potentially play that same and even expand. Look at other places like Jackson Hole. Both Grand Teton and Yellowstone are getting reservation systems. There's really not any other place to go. They're not going to have the same opportunity you do to spread that visitation around. All right, almost done. Visitation model, this was an extra project that RRC took on. We've got Jake and David standing by to talk about what this will help you do. Not sure if you're mistaken. Hi, David.
Yes, hey, thanks Kathy. Yes, Dave Becker here with RRC along with Jake Jorgensen, Jeremy Sage, who actually presented at the summit just yesterday, was, has been primarily the driver of this. But essentially the thought here is that we wanted to provide an additional tool, dynamic tool that provides additional insight and sort of planning capabilities to understand the interrelationships between tourism and economic impacts, infrastructure impacts and so on. So essentially what this model does is look at statistical relationships between the various metrics, summarized here as well as others for purposes of understanding both aggregate visitation currently, sort of, you know, how these various components relate to visitation and drive visitation. And then also be able to use those relationships to be able to do what-if sorts of, sort of prognostications of the future. So for instance, what would an increase in visitation at the national parks mean for lodging, for sales tax, for traffic demand, those types of things? So again, this tool is really intended to be a dynamic sort of way of further leveraging the data that we've collected as part of the plan to sort of inform various decisions and generate additional insights. We're still working on the finishing touches on this, but essentially that's the basic approach. Jake, feel free to chime in if any, any other thoughts.
Yeah, and I think the, the idea with this model is, is not only to, you know, part of this was built on some work that was already ongoing with Arches. To understand how Arches plays a role in, in predicting visitation with their timed entry. And I think what we, we found is a lot of these other, while Arches and Canyonlands visitation are major drivers, they can easily be paired with some of these additional secondary data analysis tools like Consumer Price Index. It's, it's been commonly used for travel sentiment and travel forecasting. And I think it, it works well in this model too. So the idea is what, what you all will have at the end of this is something that you can plug new numbers in over time and see how the demand and likely visitation is shifts with some of these things. And a lot of this stuff is, is, you know, it, it kind of goes, coincides with overall national trends as well. When, when we see fuel prices go up, we, we always see that travel demand typically takes a little bit of a hit. And that happens at areas like Grand County as well, where you do have a fairly large base of people that are a drive market coming on a road trip. And when, when fuel prices increase, it does lead to more people staying home and not wanting to take a long road trip. But I think the idea is, we're fairly confident that all of these inputs that are in the model will give you all a good planning tool going forward and, and be able to better understand, you know, what is the, what is the likely scenario to come next summer if things change in some of these more general trends over time? And I, I think that's the, that's the end goal, is to have you all be able to use it and then be able to make decisions on it before it happens to you based on what's looking like in terms of forecasting into the future.
So that brings us to the end of the presentation and the beginning of a discussion, I hope. So thank you again for this opportunity to, to do this work. I hope it will point you into some good new directions. Here to answer any questions and delve into this a bit further, yes.
The person that was just speaking, it was talking about using that tool. How do you, I mean, how do you use the tool? I mean.
I might expand on that. And I, I think as Jake mentioned, for many destinations, a commission like, like you of trying to think about what might 25 hold or 26 hold. And with this model, it will allow you to say, well, what if we do see continued inflation and fuel prices continuing to spike or, or hotel accommodations, beverage costs continue to, to spike? What might that happen? If, if the national parks are thinking about new initiatives that might impact attraction to the parks themselves, you're able to input some of those what-ifs. And I think just give you another resource, another tool that helps you increasingly clarify what some of these impacts might have and how you might prepare and, and position the destination to try and address some of these, these changes. And I think in the past, too often we, we just sort of speculate about what some of those things might be. And I think this tool will provide a resource for you to dig in deeper.
Yeah, and, and just, just to build on Mitch's points, what, what this ends up being is essentially it's a formula that, that's developed with all of those different things going into it. And so what, and Jeremy can expand on this and send kind of how it'll, it'll work later on. But what it is, is essentially, if you want to look at like, what if fuel price went up by a dollar? How does that impact total visitation? You can change that number and see, you know, if we increase fuel price to $4.50 a gallon, how does that impact total visitation? So it can be used hypothetically, but also it can be used in a way to, you know, if you're starting to see, you know, if you get data of like, this is what we're expecting or predicting for, for next year or for next summer in terms of some of these metrics, you can plug that in early and see how does that impact our visitation going forward? And I think like, like Mitch said, it's a, it's a tool to be used more from, from a planning aspect to, to kind of forecast the future and see how things will change.
One final point, I, I think we're commissioners, seeing some of those potential implications on tax resources and revenue generation can often be a critical element that you're oftentimes focused on. And again, give you some additional insights on what level of slowing could potentially have on some of the future resources that the county has to, to work with.
Follow Mary's said, because I don't know that the question got answered again for me. Where is this tool and who has it? Who's putting it out there and how regularly so we start to see the trends? I think that's where she, that's what I, I think she wants to.
Jake, yeah, Jake, you want to take that one?
Yeah, so that will, it'll be, the tool, we have kind of every, all the model inputs that, that have it built out. Jeremy Sage, who can't be here today, he has the kind of working version that'll be sent to the economic development organization. So they'll, they'll have it and they'll, they'll be able to share with folks after that.
And Commissioner, there will be a separate report that expands on that, identifies and talks more about those input elements and how they can be tracked and updates to those could be processed to keep the, the model current.
This is really going to be for a staff member at some point to be putting input into the correct.
Correct, but with, with clarity about those, those inputs, where those inputs can be derived from and, and again, how that model works and operates.
So the tool is yet to be developed in a sense. It's, we're in the, we're in the beginning, we have the vision, but we, we haven't received the exact tool that people use.
Well, Commissioner, go ahead.
It's in development right now. And Jake, can you give an ETA on when it will be completed?
I, that's, that's Jeremy's the one that's been building it. We have the whole, the whole formula is built. Basically now it is just put it into an Excel sheet where you can input that values. So a lot of the work was, the work is mostly done, but it's just putting it into an interactive Excel sheet that you can enter the numbers in yourselves.
So basically Commissioner, it's, it's within weeks. And, and so then a group would have the resource, the tool and the And, and so Ben and group would have the resource, the tool and the accompanying report to talk about how to utilize and access the tool. So it's, it's still a work, but it's sort of final refinement and should be available within weeks.
And there was training for the economic development department or have an admin team?
I'm sure.
And maybe I, I would see it being advantageous for Stephen and because he's doing a lot of the analysis of where he thinks the, you know, the money is going to be next summer or our budget season. So to me, that seems like a huge tool for him to first to get.
So the other Stephen. Yeah, I'm, let's go to Stephen Stocks, the other Stephen.
So a couple of questions on the model, and if you could just give me point blank answers and I, I, if it's, if it's included, so number one, is this service included with the contract that we have? Number two, will there be updates to the model as we go? Number three, is it going to cost us anything to check the model? And then number four, have you tested the model?
So it is included in the current, current contracts. In terms of updates, that's not currently scoped out in terms of, of, of our work, but it's something that, you know, we're happy to, to be able to discuss. And then in terms of testing, we have tested it and, and I think that's all been done. It's basically now put it into an Excel form that people can use. So yeah, it's all been tested, all been kind of tested with a, with a variety of factors. So yeah, it's all, that kind of stuff's all done with it.
No, you go ahead. I think I know what I want to talk about.
Okay. To entertain, especially a question that's not about. So, so you, you, you made a lot of recommendations and to me, they seem to run the gamut from fairly obvious things like work on housing, you know, that was already on our list to some, you know, fairly non-obvious things like, you know, search and rescue education things. Could, could you, you know, it's, it's hard for all this stuff to sink on us. If you just wanted to summarize what you think some of the most creative idea, recommendations you have are, you know, the things that we may not have thought about before, review those, the top two or three.
Yeah, well, I think you, you mentioned probably the top one, the search and rescue idea, which I think, which we think, I think, could be really extraordinary way for you to cement the Moab brand for outdoor recreation, but also create a reason for people to come to Moab in the off season, stay in your hotels, get training, because it's really taking this center of excellence and turning it into a product that can, that is not dependent on people coming when the weather's fine. Mainly search and rescue people would probably be getting their training at times when you don't have a lot of visitors because that's when they're not busy either. So a lot of the ways that we try to think about stimulating your, your tourism economy has to do with bringing people here when you're not busy. So that is the heart of the cultural initiative because that builds your economy year round. One of the ideas that we didn't mention, and it may seem obvious, but we see a lot of potential in it, is building out your wedding economy. You have these extraordinary landscapes. We drew this inspiration from two people who were in the tech industry in the Bay Area, came here on vacation during COVID, just tried to figure out a way they could make their lives here. And they have been building this wedding planning business. They were assuring topical roundtable, there is so much more room in this space. They're turning away business. This is an economy that can support not only wedding planners, but bakeries, photographers, videographers.
Tour companies.
Tour companies, your hoteliers, your restaurants, caterers. So we, we think this is a big opportunity and it's basically about making it really easy for people to bring their wedding here.
I think that was the most impactful thing I saw at the business summit yesterday was when Natalie showed a one minute clip of an advertisement that has gotten more traction than Mighty Five and all of the other advertising the state's done and it's simply in love in Utah.
Yeah.
And, and it's a one minute clip and it has, it's gone wild compared to the Mighty Five campaign already.
It taps into an emotion. She and I talked about that afterward. Before I left my job in Colorado, one of the things we identified was that people didn't just enjoy coming to Colorado to do things. They loved Colorado. I suspect people have that same feeling about Utah. They love Utah. I think that's why that ad struck such a chord because it tapped that deep emotion people have about your state. So you could easily tie into, into that kind of emotion for a wedding economy, wedding proposition. The other kind of fun thing about weddings, you saw the, the people, we had another piece of research about which kinds of travelers, travelers were most likely to be repeat visitors. Wedding travelers were 100% likely to come back in the next three years. The only people who even rival them were your base jumpers. They were about 90% likely to come back.
And I might read it's all a leap of faith. Search and rescue. And that really aligns with that pathway too of those tourism adjacent. We didn't call that out in, in the summary that we presented, but that, that really aligns with those small entrepreneur, all, all the ones that we were just clicking off there. Those are often times two, three person businesses. They don't require huge physical presence or, or large workforces. And that can be a very, very powerful segment. We worked with Sedona County a number of years back and they really, really went in and that ended up being one of their fastest growing segments for a number of years. But very importantly, that's not something that you just sort of dip your toe and you've got to say, we're in this game and dedicated elements of the website in terms of how we can almost be a quasi wedding planner and, and assist you, help you understand how you can make Moab and Grand County a part of that experience. Well, one final point, Commissioner, to your question about opportunity here is I really believe that building some of these early stage artisans and, and thinking about how you can attract them and provide small workspaces for them. I was just up in Ogden the last couple of days. They've got this really, really great artisan colony. They reused an old parking structure, but you can walk up and, and through and any day of the week, you will have a variety of the artisans actively working, all of their materials are for, for sale and thinking about some of those relatively easy elements to attract those artisans who would be attracted to the physical environment if they were providing, provided an element and that could really elevate without a lot of investment to, to stimulate some of that activity.
Um, I really like the idea of expanding on the cultural piece and, and if that means the arts, you know, theater, concerts, and just kind of a quick aside, I just went on a major trip. It was a big trip for me and I specifically chose a trip that was part adventure and part culture, right? Which is not usually my deal. I always go on climbing trips and it's like, okay, I gotta kind of break that habit. And it was amazing and I, I, I really would like to see this community expand on that. I mean, I think to me, I think of a similar, like Santa Fe. I can go to Santa Fe, I can have really good food. I can walk in amazing, you know, art, art galleries and I can hike and I could bike and I can do all of those things. And, and, and so if you have any, just if you want to expand on little tidbits that we can do, I, I think that'd be valuable.
I think your Santa Fe example is, is good, but you know, Sedona, the Red Rocks, arts and culture, critically important piece of, of that mix of, of experience. And we were just mentioning Park City and obviously with, with Sundance and some of those elements that can, that, that, that they've got. But I think that's going to be an area that they recognize that that combination of that outdoor enthusiasts, that outdoor recreationals in many instances are their enthusiasts, cultural enthusiasts as well. And so as you can build out and give them a broader array of activities, so it's not just that great hike experience or a great river experience, but then I can spend the afternoon with artisans or some activity or as you say, a great performance in the evening, those kinds of things can be very powerful.
Would say another, another way to activate this in your community is to take some of the cultural venues you have and bring them, bring them up to standards. This is, we heard a lot about different places, trying to remember the name of the place in town that doesn't have an effective sound system. You can't serve liquor there. You know, it's sort of like, how do you take what you have and, and improve it to the point where it can actually support our vibrant cultural experience?
I'll just jump in and say that Grand County already has a good foundation in the arts. There's Southern Methodist University has this Arts Vibrancy Index and Grand County ranks in the 99th percentile for public support, 94th percentile for arts dollars, 79th percentile for arts providers. So this is actually fairly common across multiple different resorts, Picken County, Aspen, Summit County, Park City, Teton County, up in Wyoming. As you mentioned, Santa Fe, Taos. So this is definitely a well-established pattern in vibrant destinations, given the sort of natural affinity with travel and tourism.
That perspective, David, and then I, and another bit of input from our roundtable. People described cultural tourism as non-contentious tourism here. Nobody has a problem with it.
So far, I just want to say thank you. I, I've loved every thing that's come out of this. I do love, I mean, looking into the arts, the, tying in with the university's search and rescue aspect, great. But everything in my mind ties back to your first statement that the amphitheater is a great idea out at Outrepile.
That's.
But we, we as a community couldn't get a custodian to clean there because they can't move here. The homes, the homes is key. Entrepreneurs aren't coming here because they can't live here. Employees to those entrepreneurs aren't coming here because they can't live here. Everything, everything we're talking about, we, we need people and people are not going to come or stay or even my own kids aren't going to stay because they can't live here. That tackling that is, is paramount in my mind.
I, I think we are very much aligned with, with that recognition. And that's why our first pillar was to really reemphasize, and I, I think Commissioner, where you're, you're saying some of this is obvious, but we thought it was critically important that we said, without addressing these fundamentals, that the ability to, to move forward in a positive proactive has limited opportunities. And so really calling those out and making that the first pillar in, in terms of, of understanding that, that concentrated efforts. And some of those are, are going to be difficult decisions on, on how much do we push some of those and what are we going to be comfortable with, allowing to stay at this level instead of moving to that level? But you are right on target. And that's why on both pillar two and pillar three, we were trying to provide ideas and concepts that could still be moved forward while some of these more time consuming requirements of pillar one might still be, be working on to make sure that it's understood that we can be making progress in some of these other more smaller entrepreneurial, independent areas with weddings, artisans, search and rescue, those kinds of things. But we're in complete agreement and, and again, that's why we put the first pillar as, as needing to recognize that reality.
You had mentioned, one of the suggestions was contracting with a housing czar specialist. Are you familiar with any companies that you've seen active at that in other areas?
What, Kathy? I'm happy to dig around a bit because I think this is an expertise that is so much needed. Let me, you know what, I'll send that. I will send you some names.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I know, as I mentioned, Kathy and I are, are working up in Park City right now and obviously they like just about every other recreational ski areas in particular, right? Working on new creative ideas of flexible space and the ability to almost have dorm and lodge all types of, of units. So I'm, I'm sure we can give some suggestions along, along that line.
I almost think that we need a similar study towards housing. You have to have something that comes in because we're regularly divided commission here, we're divided county constituency wise, relations even sometimes stressed between the city and the county. Getting somebody that comes in and puts all that, mixes it up to where it comes out with some ideas that we can perform it on because we've got to stop simply talking about solving a solution that we've got to solve. It's being done elsewhere.
It needs a comprehensive solution. And so that, that was really the thinking behind that recommendation was to make it a priority, get somebody who can be the, be the solution, but obviously with a lot of input.
I, I wanted to add to my statement. I, I thank you guys for making that the pillar, I mean, the first pillar. It's the first pillar in my mind. And it, it's, it's both nice, egotistical here or just the thought that that's a, a known problem from someone we put to, to, to look at this. It's an elevated problem in our, in our county, even, even compared to Summit or Jackson or counties.
It came up in every single conversation.
I think I, um, I did, I also point out that we do have a Moab area housing task force and they've given us a moderately detailed report within the past year. So that might just, you know, I, I think we do need to keep working on housing, but we need to, you know, use the, the past reports that we commissioned and presented to us as a starting.
I don't know. When I'm, you know, looking at this and, and I've taken some ideas that you've talked about the search and rescue, the arts, the wedding. Was there any talks in Moab? We have a great deal of people who are working in, what do I call it, alternative health? And, you know, we have lots of massage therapists, bodywork, yoga studios, things of that nature. I see that also as maybe taking it capitalizing on, on taking, looking around and seeing like we have a lot of these people that are already doing it. Ben and I have worked with the Arts Council a lot. And what we have come through, you know, with all the discussion is what it almost always comes down to is hiring someone who is going to focus on them. Hiring somebody that's job is to collect and gather, bring together all the types of arts we have in the community and then promoting them in a way that, that we could get the message out that yes, we have this amazing people who are doing pottery that, you know, you know, that, you know, and so, so oftentimes what I see, you know, what it's coming down to is having, you know, putting someone in place that is their job, what they need to do. And I know the Arts Council has been working with the economic development board or department about, you know, collaborating together to fund such a, a position so that we can push on that thing. And I, you know, I was thinking the health. And I think building on what we already have is a good idea rather than trying to go from the beginning like we have our, our housing task, not our housing task, but our land trust has been very successful. A Royal Crossing and I'm speaking with their board the other day and they want to expand. They see that they have a model that works. How can they expand? And once again, it came right down to, and we got down into the details, hiring another person. We, we had to hire someone to take over a Royal Crossing to be a direct. We, we had to hire someone to take over a Royal Crossing, to be a director, to get it started. And it went around like this for about three, four years and then we hired somebody and within a year we have houses happening. So I guess I'm putting that out to the budget people is I think if we really want to, uh, do some of these things, the housing arts, we, we're going to have to look at having a key person. You can't, you can't expect volunteer boards to put, to get that done. You need somebody hired that is in charge of almost every, you know, canyon, uh, you know, marches and Canyonlands Foundation. They have somebody that's, you know, they don't just depend on their volunteer board. So it, uh, oftentimes just comes down to money and where we put our money. And I think this report is really good because it really shows us where we need to put our money. We need to put our money first towards housing, how, get housing going. And then I think trying to figure out some way, but because we have Canyonlands Field Institute, which is already providing, teaching people search and rescue on the river, search and rescue. So we have a beginning there. So take that beginning, maybe connect Canyonlands Field Institute with the university. And say, how can we expand upon what you're doing so that we can expand it from river to camp and our, and our amazing search and rescue team?
So I must, and I might just point out two, two elements. One, I think what's, what could be very powerful is if you, um, are not just trying to, uh, to nurture some of that, but you're, you're planting your flag in the ground. And you are going to be the national center of excellence in these spaces. And that's how Moab and Grand County is, is going to be perceived. And you, you take some of those bold positions where that is, is truly a, a aggressive position you're taking. The other point on your, on your wellness, um, I, I think you're, you're on, on base here and we didn't, uh, touch on that here today. But that's another natural element that many of the, uh, outdoor recreation. And that's a powerful theme that many, uh, visitors are not just going to recreate, but wellness, how do I recharge? How do I, uh, and thinking beyond just, do you have spas or, or those kinds of elements? The wellness is in, in your food beverage offerings. It's in the spirituals. It's going out, uh, at yoga in some of the natural environments in all kinds of ways. But I think your point of thinking about wellness is another element that, that reinforces some of the differentiating components, uh, of the destination. That makes a lot of sense.
Do you have a online, oh, go ahead, but then we have an online question waiting.
Oh, see the docs, yes.
So you folks do follow, follow-ups with your entities that you've done these, um, proposals or studies for? Do you follow up with them historically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. What, what do you see that they do that's most productive when they're incorporating the findings that you, that you see? You know, because, and, and where this question is geared at is many entities in this community pay for studies, fancy studies, and they're putting fancy binders and they put on shelves and they collect dust. So what, what are some things that you guys see for implementation? Is it creating policy and then directing staff? Is it creating, uh, an action plan apart from, you know, follow, of course, follow the recommendation? What are kind of the concrete things that the entities do that you deem are successful based with, based on your follow-up and your check-in? Kind of like what, what's the best advice to give the commission on, on how they, you know, go forth now that they have all this information?
Well, every, every, uh, every plan is a bit different. Uh, I just finished, I just finished a governance study for White Tourism Authority. The governor's endorsed it. Several legislators have endorsed it. We're actually moving legislation. And that one is pretty straightforward. Other destination stewardship plans, sometimes have revolved around hiring a person to lead destination stewardship for several of the initiatives we've outlined for you. We've tried, in fact, there is probably more verbiage in your action plan than I've ever created for an action plan. Because we were giving you pretty detailed direction, um, on many of these topics moving ahead. So for instance, the, the search and rescue, that's one initiative. I would say that would require a feasibility study. You would want to know what segments would be most interested in getting search and rescue treated. That's where you would want to start. You would want to try to assess the interest. You obviously would want to work with USU on doing that. If it should, should it be a certificate program? Is there some other, you know, mechanism that would work? So you could almost take each one of these topics. Um, some of them would be or to do a feasibility study for, like the, the wedding, the wedding, uh, initiative. By the way, the reason we didn't go to wellness, even though you have a lot of wellness here, is because we didn't want to send you off in too many different directions at once, quite honestly. We tried to pick the ones that we thought would be the most productive for you. Uh, I think some other.
Yeah, as Kathy is thinking, um, I, I might just give a, an example. We've, we've worked with Sedona for the last 15 years, um, and a variety of, of strategies. And one of the most powerful elements is, is recognizing it's not just the, the convention and visitor bureau or their staff that is doing it in a, in a vacuum, but they're activating the industry participants. And, um, some of the ideas that we threw out there, you know, there could be a product development, um, committee or forum where you're bringing in some of the innovative thinkers from the private sector and you're meeting on an ongoing kind of basis. And they're, they're helping craft and deliver and, and refine some of these elements. So that the organization, whether it's a, a county economic department, whether it's a convention and visitor bureau can move those forwards. But I think what's, what's critically important is you're looking at, uh, that plan is not just the, the economic development department's plan. It's the industry's plan and how do we activate, how do we bring the, the wide range of, of folks that frankly were, uh, uh, very, very willing to help Kathy and, and I and our, the RRC group as we were trying to formulate, how do you keep that momentum going? How do you keep that participation going? I think that can be critically important, uh, as a going forward, uh, element to ensure that that doesn't just sit on the, sit on the shelf.
Part of the work here was to demonstrate to your community that their voices were heard. So in a lot of ways, we embedded what we heard in the roundtable discussions, even in those lightly attended community forums. There are, uh, it's important when you do a plan like this to make certain it is actually reflecting what people are saying they want for their county. And I think that is where, that is where we have, uh, really spent a lot of effort. So now it's important to go back to people as, as Mitch was saying. This is what we heard from you. And let me give you one more example. Commissioner Walker, you asked about sort of the creative things that were in this plan. And this one came from your community. We heard that there would be, it would be a home run for the commission or some governmental entity to create an incubator, uh, commercial kitchen.
Well, we, yeah, we, we've really looked at that.
We did.
As far as, uh, Colette, is Colette still on? Yeah, but anyway, Colette from the governor's office and such, I, I think we're going to be putting a lot of energy into it this year. The most important part is finding a place and a, uh, it can't just be, you have to have some organization stable. Like, you know, the county, the city, you know, some is going to still be here. And, uh, that's going to kind of be in charge of it.
Right.
And it's also very expensive.
And Sally had mentioned a high, the high school cafeteria. The high school cafeteria has, has been turned into a, the wrestling.
Wrestling, right.
But they're, so they're now doing lunches in the commons area. No longer this year do they have to, so the commercial kitchen may be available. They make lunches elsewhere and bring them in to the high school.
Oh, thank you.
They're going to be reopening that.
Yeah.
I like, they're going to be using that space for the high school.
Here's the open period.
The high school is going to reopen their kitchen that they plan to if they can find a place to employ. Goodness. Now, they plan.
Okay, so. But that, that's, uh, and it's, uh, like Colette, if you want to say something, Colette, we've talked about. We've got the idea now. We've really kicked it around and did research this year. Now it's just, it's going to take some time to get off the ground, but I, I think that's a real good idea.
So. Point if, if I could, uh, could raise, um, one of the things that we kept top of mind as we went through a variety of our recommendations is many of these elements speak to interests of external visitors. But we believe in, in many instances, it also speaks to, uh, amenity and quality of life for, for your residents. Uh, and those kinds of elements, some of the artisan elements and those, uh, cultural kinds of components not only resonate, but, um, make, uh, Moab and, and Grant County an even better place and, and add to the resident quality of life. So I, I think the, the more that we can talk about that we're not just doing this for the external visitor, we're also prioritizing elements, uh, that can be embraced and, and, uh, well- perceived by our residents as well. Just an, uh, an important point to keep, keep in mind.
So we're approaching noon and maybe we should try to wrap this up. So further questions?
I guess one point I would think that maybe we should consider in very near future to maybe workshop minimum of like an hour with Ted's department and just decide as a body here, what we want to see moving forward to come out of this. It's, uh, it's, it's really going to be giving some direction to somebody on different levels. And I think starting with the Ted's department is where we start. You have to start implementing some of these ideas. And I think we've got to come up with that amongst ourselves. Workshop that.
So maybe Quinn, you know, just when we've got space at a meeting for a workshop, you could remember to put that on.
Sure. Going into budget season, we have plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm like. I, I think another group that would be worth keeping together with is the land trust and, uh, the task force because they already are doing a lot and they've already been successful to, to tackle the other parts, which is housing.
Mike? I've seen some good points, uh, made. Uh, thank you again, uh, again, guys. I don't want to put this study on the shelf. Uh, that was a good analogy made. Uh, emphasis on, let's, let's revisit this from the can. I know it's budget season. Uh, I'm not going to deny that fact, but let's not just shell this. I mean, not to be mean, you guys weren't cheap, but, uh, I, I like, I like, I've liked the information that's come out and we need to do it. So, I mean, let's not just put this, not, not just put this away.
Okay. So, but, but I'm, these nodheads are not, if this is consensus, but some, some of the near-term follow-up we'd want to do. The one is a, a meeting to talk about specific, follow-ups that are specific to this report. And then the others to reengage with, you know, the housing efforts and reports that we already have going on. It's been a while since we've had that on a agenda. Try to keep that moving as well.
Yeah, I think, uh, to add to that list, um, we have heard about updating the venues and sound systems for a while. And maybe that's something to put on a priorities list for this year. So whoever, um, might have input or guidance on that for us.
I, if we did one workshop to Bill's point, and then we could create a couple of subcommittees and, and push them in different directions. Then it could probably be a little bit more agile going forward and with less, you know, big meetings.
Okay. Anything else?
But just, just a thought on making it easier and maybe moving forward quicker is do we really need to have a separate time to do a workshop? Or, uh, could we work directly with the Economic Opportunity Board, which is, that's kind of their task? And, um, maybe, you know, instead of just myself, having two other commissioners go to that meeting or somehow so that it, but that might be faster than trying to have a workshop and then, because it's already kind of happening there.
I think we should have the workshop and give them some guidance after they had a discussion around this, the part we want them to go moving forward. Redirect, you know, simply some of it.
Well, there's a board and then there's a department and, and then there's us. So there's kind of a lot of players. But I think that, um, yeah, continue again with, with both the department and the advisory board.
But, um. I was just trying to think the faster way than just having another workshop because I was. We could already start kind of workshopping it.
Okay. Well, we can, we'll continue to think about ways to proceed. I mean, we don't have to fix our plans right now. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
Um, I assume you'll be available for follow-up questions of.
Absolutely.
And I'm looking forward to seeing the tool. That is one of the tools.
All right, we will, we will.
Okay. And with that, I'll, uh, close this meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Well, one would be.